I would also like to personally thank this bill's cosponsor, Councilman James Kenny, in his absence for his leadership on this very, very important environmental issue. We all know that Councilman Kenny has been a retireless, a tireless, and relentless advocate for Philadelphia's environment and sustainability community, and I would be remiss not to thank him in his absence and his former staff personally for all the work they did on this measure. On August the 27th, 2012, Mayor Nutter signed into law Bill Number 120428-A, which required the benchmarking of energy and water use for any commercial building or building with a commercial space of 50,000 or more indoor square footage. This legislation, known as the Energy Benchmarking Bill, has led to greater transparency and efficiency of energy use throughout Philadelphia. And as a footnote, I want to acknowledge also in their absence the leadership at BOMA, where Kathy Gilmore and BOMA and I worked for a long time, along with the Office of Sustainability. Katherine Gajewski here?
Yes, to make that first energy benchmarking real. On January 22nd, 2015, I was proud to introduce Bill Number 150011, which expands Philadelphia's energy benchmarking requirements to include any building with 50,000 or more indoor square footage. This bill is the result of a collaborative research and planning effort, again with the Nutter administration, the Mayor's Office of Sustainability, and many environmental and industry stakeholders right here in this room. This legislation is another step in the right direction towards achieving Philadelphia's long-term goal of becoming the greenest and most sustainable city in America. When it comes to sustainability, I'm always inspired by a quote from the renowned scientist Carl Sagan. Quote, "Anything else you're interested in is not going to happen if you can't breathe the air or drink the water. Don't sit this one out. Do something." End quote. For these reasons and more, I'm asking for your support on this measure today. Again, I want to thank my staff, Haji Malumian, and those who worked with him, the administration, Katherine Gajewski and her team, and all of those who've come to support this legislation today. And with that, Mr. Clerk, we'd ask you to read the title of the bill.
An ordinance amending Section 9-3402 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Benchmarking Energy and Water Use to extend the buildings for which the benchmarking reporting of energy and water use data is required, all under certain terms and conditions.
Please allow me to introduce the members who are with us today. Majority Leader, Councilman Jones; Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, who also chairs the Committee on Education. And this is an educational measure, Councilwoman, so it's all is aligned. And Councilman David O., for coming together to allow us to have a forum. First up is Andrew Sharp, Deputy Director of Policy for the Mayor's Office of Sustainability, and he will be followed by Tom Bonner, Energy Policy Manager for PICO. And I see here Melanie Lath. Okay then. Thank you, gentlemen.
Great. Good morning, Chairwoman Reynolds Brown and members of the committee. I'm Andrew Sharp. I'm the Deputy Director for Policy here at the Mayor's Office of Sustainability. I also have my colleague Rich Free here with me, who manages the city's energy benchmarking program. I'm here to testify in support of Bill 150011, which amends the existing energy benchmarking reporting requirement for privately owned buildings to include multifamily buildings over 50,000 square feet. I'd like to thank Chairwoman Reynolds Brown for her leadership and partnership in promoting energy efficiency and sustainability here in the city. As many of you know, the Mayor's Office of Sustainability is responsible for implementation of Greenworks Philadelphia, the city's comprehensive sustainability plan. Greenworks sets measurable goals in the areas of energy, environment, equity, economy, and engagement. This bill supports several of those objectives, including energy conservation, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and improve air quality. More than 60% of the greenhouse gas emissions in Philadelphia come from our buildings, more than double that of the transportation sector. It's clear that in order to see a meaningful reduction in citywide energy use and greenhouse gas emissions, we must address our buildings. Improving the resiliency of our city's building stock increases value and regional competitiveness, and avoiding the cost of wasted energy means more dollars going back into the local economy. Energy efficiency solutions are simple, affordable, and accessible, but only when the people who own, manage, and rent those buildings are aware of their energy performance. Benchmarking refers to the process of reporting and disclosing whole building utility data on an annual basis. In Philadelphia and other cities where similar requirements have been adopted, this process is done using Portfolio Manager, which is a free tool provided by the U.S. EPA. Similar to a miles per gallon rating on a car, Portfolio Manager provides building owners, operators, and tenants an easy-to-understand way to rate the building's energy efficiency. For the first time, building owners in Philadelphia can now compare their property to their peers in other cities on a cost-per-square-foot basis, but also on a 1 to 100 measure of energy performance, commonly known as an Energy Star score. Our office has been implementing the Energy Benchmarking Program for non-residential buildings over 50,000 square feet for two years, and the city is already seeing the impact of this data in the marketplace. Over 90% of the buildings required have reported in year two, providing the city with a wealth of new information about energy and water performance of our building stock. Overall, the median building score in Philadelphia scored a 63 on a scale of 1 to 100. MOS is encouraged by this figure, but it also demonstrates how much work we have left to do. Peer cities, including New York, Chicago, and DC, have median scores over 70 on an Energy Star scale. At the same time, MOS has provided personal building report cards to owners, operators, letting them know how their facility is rated, not only in comparison to national medians, but also to peer buildings in this city. Earlier this year, our office worked with Azavia, a local data visualization firm, to develop an online tool that shows this data in an easy-to-use map. Through the City Energy Project, a multi-city initiative to improve building performance, our office will be expanding outreach efforts in 2015 to ensure that this data can be matched to available utility incentive programs offered by PGW and PICO to continue the work of improving energy efficiency here in Philadelphia. With these results in hand, we strongly support the Councilwoman's effort to now expand this successful program to multifamily buildings. In 2014, the EPA released Energy Star scores for residential buildings for the first time, clearing a major data hurdle for this set of buildings. The Green Condo Co-op, which I believe is here today, which represents many of the estimated 800 buildings that would be covered by this new ordinance, is strongly supportive of energy benchmarking for residential buildings. With this bill, apartment and condo owners will have the ability to access the same citywide standardized data that commercial building owners have now. This information will allow building owners to make more informed investments in energy efficiency upgrades, leading to reduced utility costs and improved comfort for the estimated 48% of Philadelphians who are currently renters. It provides transparency to the marketplace, allowing tenants to compare energy use between a building and its neighbor. We've found that the more building owners know about their building, the more empowered they are to improve it and make upgrades. A building with good energy management practices is good for tenants, owners, taxpayers, and the environment. Based on our experience implementing benchmarking for commercial buildings, MOS supports adding multifamily buildings as a positive, cost-neutral approach to making Philadelphia more energy efficient. Thank you for this opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Surely. Do you have testimony, sir?
I do.
Okay. Any questions for members of the committee? If you could, please, Councilman Jones, Majority Leader.
Madam Chair, the number of renters, did I get that right, 48,000?
48% of residents rent their apartments or homes.
Wow, okay.
That was my reaction as well. Please elaborate briefly, I don't know if you can do that, that's oxymoron, isn't it? Elaborating briefly, on the Mayor's Office of Sustainability implementation plan for this legislation once in, or if it becomes law?
Sure. So, the implementation will be done through regulation. We are committed to working with building owners, with tenants, with utilities, as we have done with the commercial benchmarking law, to create a timeline and process that works for everyone. We're committed to collaboratively seeking funding for utilities should they need it there, but I think the success of our initial commercial benchmarking program speaks to the process and how we intend to go about setting up an implementation and reporting timeline.
Utilities would need funding for why?
Essentially, utilities, you know, may need, will take additional staff capacity to put together some of this. We've worked through some of these challenges with utilities already, with PICO, PGW. We've had discussions with them and have had a partnership with them since before 2012 on this, and we have obviously overcome all of the hurdles, and we expect to do that with this ordinance.
And so if you had to attach a theoretical timeline from, once the mayor signs it into law, to actual implementation of the regulations, what would you guesstimate?
I don't want to guesstimate.
So then let's look at history. How long did it take with the commercial effort?
Rich, do you want to speak to that?
Absolutely. And again, my name is Rich Free. I'm the City Energy Project Manager in the Mayor's Office of Sustainability. So, the commercial building benchmarking law was signed in 2012, I believe it was summer of 2012, and the first reporting deadline for commercial buildings was October 31st, 2013.
A little over a year.
Yeah, over a year from passage to implementation. As Andrew said, we're committed to working with the stakeholders here in the room today and other folks who would be affected, both kind of in the regulated community as well as among utilities and other stakeholders, to ensure that the timeline works for everyone and no building owner is unduly burdened by this regulation.
Lastly, speak to enforcement. How will this effort, this new legislation, be enforced? Will a building owner be penalized if they make a good faith effort to obtain the required benchmarking information?
So, if building owners make a good faith effort to obtain data, and for whatever reason utilities cannot provide it, building owners will not be penalized for that. So, we obviously want to make sure that the law is enforced well, but we do not intend to penalize building owners who make a good faith effort and can't get their data from the utility.
Very well. Well, thank you very much for your testimony, gentlemen.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome. Tom Bonner, Energy Policy Manager for PICO. And up next will be Alan Duse, Joan Battery, and Jim Giblin.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairwoman Reynolds Brown, and members of the committee for inviting me here to testify today on behalf of PICO regarding the company's efforts to assist property owners in saving energy and money and comply with the city's benchmarking law. Going to depart from my text for just one second to say...
You're welcome to do that, as long as you pull the mic closer to you.
Sure. On the previous panel, when there was a discussion about utilities potentially needing assistance from the city, just want to assure you, in PICO's case, that is not the case. We get our approval for spending money on this project from the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission.
Okay.
But in no case will we be asking the city for any financial assistance.
Very well.
So I just wanted to...
Put that on record.
...get that out there real clearly. I'm Tom Bonner, Energy Policy Manager for PICO, and I've had the pleasure of working directly with you, your staff, and the Mayor's Office of Sustainability, both on the development and implementation of this law. Supporting our customers' efforts to save energy and money is an important part of our community mission. Through PICO Smart Ideas, an industry-leading energy efficiency program, we've helped our customers save $408 million and removed the equivalent of 166,000 cars from the road between 2010 and 2014. The company also offers a program called PICO Smart Multifamily Solutions for properties with four or more units, providing a complimentary energy assessment and direct installation of energy-saving measures on the properties. Multifamily properties are also eligible to receive incentives for installing or upgrading equipment, I'm sorry, qualifying by efficiency equipment in common areas or whole building systems. PICO has been pleased to serve as a resource, assisting in the development and implementation of the city's energy benchmarking law. In 2012, PICO was asked to provide input to council on what types of information the company could provide to owners of large commercial buildings if council were to require energy efficiency benchmarking. At that time, we met with representatives of council, the Mayor's Office of Sustainability, and these stakeholders explained that all PICO customers currently can receive their monthly energy usage data from their PICO.com account. We also noted that we're considering options to provide this information through electronic data transfer that can be linked directly to the U.S. EPA's Portfolio Manager portal. While we didn't take a position on that legislation, we did provide input on some key issues that were ultimately reflected in the legislation. One was that development and deployment of the tool does take some time. This is a fairly complex information technology project that needs to be worked with the rest of the utilities' IT system. Two was that the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission would have to approve the spending to implement this program, which they ultimately did. Number three was that the benchmarking requirement would need to be established in a manner that protected the utility from any legal liability involved in transferring this data. The legislation was very good in that respect. And four, that consumers requesting electronic data transfer would be required to maintain and update the lists of properties that they needed the data transfer to occur for. The law that passed the council on June 21st and was signed by Mayor Nutter in August of that year met all of these criteria, and we have been pleased to work to help implement the law as passed. The company has also joint representatives of the city, the Energy Efficient Buildings Hub, which I'm trying to recall, it's, I believe it is now the Consortium for Building Energy Innovation, and the Building Owners and Managers Association on informational sessions throughout the city to train customers on how to use the PICO tool. In the spring of 2013, the PUC approved our Act 129 Phase II Plan, and the company, which included the proposed funding for this capability, and PICO began development of what's called PICO Smart Energy Usage Data Tool, or the PSEUDT. Making my life easy, I'm just referring to that as the PICO tool for the rest of the testimony. In spite of some timing challenges related to EPA's updates to the Portfolio Manager, which pushed back our ability to do the final coding on our tool, we were able to launch in September 2013, one month ahead of the city's compliance deadline. Currently, 152 building owners have registered to establish a PICO tool account covering 260 buildings which receive monthly data through electronic transfer. Building owners can have their data sent to them either automatically to them or automatically transferred directly to U.S. EPA. That's a choice they make when they have the account established. PICO also developed tenant authorization forms that allows, in the case of commercial building owners that have subleased tenants, the ability, a legally recognized ability to authorize transfer of their data to us, and then ultimately to EPA. At the request of your office and the Office of Sustainability, we've reviewed our capabilities to use our existing tool to provide multifamily buildings with automated data transfer service in almost all cases that should be possible. The overwhelming majority of large multifamily buildings in the city are commercial accounts which our tool has currently configured to transfer the data from. There may be a small number of cases. We don't think this is going to be the case, where something is a residential PICO account in a building that's more than 50,000 square feet. We have not found any of those in our reviews, but we don't want to say definitively that they're not out there. In that case, if we were to encounter one or two customers, we would work with those customers individually to provide some solution. We probably would not want to reconfigure the tool at a pretty significant IT expense to accommodate one or two customers, but we would, we would set something else up.
Okay.
We would find a way to make it work. We also recognize that in terms of big picture national policy, multifamily housing is an important issue, and we've partnered with the city of Philadelphia to participate in the USDAOE's Better Buildings Accelerator program to help resolve some of the technical issues that may come up with our applying to multifamily housing. Going forward, we do face a number of issues with continuing to provide this service. Act 129 Phase II expires at the end of, I'm sorry, in the summer of 2016, and the company is evaluating all the programs in its portfolio as is good business practice. Continuing to provide this service will require continued support from the PUC. We don't anticipate that being a problem. They were very supportive in Phase II, and we know the city will also support them. So we don't anticipate a problem there, but it is one caveat I need to lay out. We're also continuing to evaluate the best technology platforms to perform this service, so we may have some changes in what we offer in some year in the future, but the service we anticipate would still be there, although we can't guarantee it. We do think, and this is, if anybody from the federal government here is listening, the ultimate best answer is for the federal government to develop a solution that supports secure transfer of energy usage data in standard green button format into the EPA Portfolio Manager. You can't do that today. President Obama did announce that as one sustainability initiative of the administration last year. We've not seen that actually come to fruition yet. We're hoping it does shortly, and that will save not only PICO, but other utilities, at least on the energy side, having to have a specialized data extraction and transfer service.
I see.
If we say really, we have two nice super highways with green button and Portfolio Manager, and unfortunately, there's a dirt road in between them that isn't quite paved over yet, and if the, if the federal government could pave over that dirt road, it would make it easier not only for PICO, but everyone around the country.
It's a great analogy.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this testimony, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for members of the committee? I thank you for your testimony as well. So, given your expertise, where does the office stand, say, with the top 10 cities on energy benchmarking? What's your estimation?
There are a number of cities that have been doing this longer than us, and I don't have the numbers how we compare to the other cities.
Okay.
We certainly look to our colleagues in Chicago at Commonwealth Edison, who've been doing this for about five, six years, and they had a unique need where they have many more sub-meter buildings in Chicago. We only have a handful in Philadelphia. That's made it very easy for us. The fact that our corporate sister company already has been doing this for six years made it comparatively easier for us to implement the tool. We also look around the country, and we see utilities that have just started looking at this issue, cities that have just started looking at this issue, and that's one of the reasons we've been pleased to participate in the Better Building Accelerator. We testified or gave a presentation at the International Green Buildings Council meeting that we had here in Philadelphia a couple of years ago.
Yes, I remember that.
We are viewed, I would say, as a best practice for collaboration between government and utilities in implementing this service.
Thank you. So this is off-topic, but related. So, give me your elevator career track. Where did you start to end up doing something like this? I'm always curious, because this, this is a futuristic, it's the future, but we're discussing it now. We weren't discussing this 20 years ago.
Sure. I've been with PICO for about seven and a half years, working in the Government Affairs Department, and I've had a bit of a unique role of a liaison between government affairs and the business, working on policy issues, trying to understand what the challenges of the business are and translate them into governmental solutions, and then understand what the interests of governmental entities are and transfer those into business solutions.
I see.
So I've been doing that position for about seven and a half years. I've worked with the team and led the team to wrote PICO Smart Grid Investment Grant.
Smart Grid Investment?
Smart Grid Investment Grant, which was the USDAOE grant that we won in 2010 for the $200 million to support our advanced meters and our advanced technology grid project.
Okay.
So that brought me into contact with a lot of the original partners that are working on energy and sustainability issues, and wrote, became the liaison for a lot of those groups, and PICO as well.
Very well. Congratulations.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome. If we could please have panel number three, Alec Duse, welcome back, now the Executive Director of the Delaware Valley Green Building Council; Joan Battery, Chairwoman for the Philadelphia Green Condo Co-op Initiative; and Jim Giblin, Greater Philadelphia Condominium Managers Association. Welcome back, Alex. Gone without the E., right?
That's right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Chairwoman Reynolds Brown and members of the City Council Committee on the Environment. My name's Alex Duse, Executive Director of the Delaware Valley Green Building Council. I'm here to testify in support of Bill Number 150011, which will require energy and water benchmarking and reporting for all large commercial buildings in Philadelphia. I'd like to thank Chairwoman Reynolds Brown for her continued commitment to green building and sustainability issues. This bill, which simply extends the existing energy and water benchmarking requirement to the residential buildings over 50,000 square feet in the city, will encourage greater energy efficiency in the large multifamily sector that includes more than 700 buildings. Delaware Valley Green Building Council's mission to improve the efficiency and sustainability of the region's building stock through education and engagement is closely aligned with the city's efforts to improve the efficiency of Philadelphia's largest buildings, which is why we fully support this amendment. Cities are the primary source of carbon emissions in this country, and in most places, buildings account for more than half of those emissions. Philadelphia is no exception, and at 62% of citywide greenhouse gas emissions, buildings represent the best opportunity to reduce the city's climate impact. The good news is that reducing emissions from buildings means lowering utility costs for building owners and managers, which results in very real financial benefits. On average, Americans spend more than 90% of their time indoors, in schools, offices, churches, hospitals, and museums, and the buildings we occupy use energy and water for very good reasons. The problem is that almost a third of the energy used in big commercial buildings is wasted, and the resulting financial and environmental costs are easily avoidable. In a lot of cases, building owners and occupants are not aware of this waste because they have no information about their building's energy performance. In the past five years, 10 cities in several states and counties across the country have passed energy benchmarking and transparency requirements. Philadelphia became the sixth city to pass a law of this kind in 2012, and was one of the first to successfully go through with implementation in 2013. Benchmarking is the key to providing information to all building stakeholders, owners, managers, tenants, brokers, and service providers. And benchmarking using Energy Star Portfolio Manager simply combines basic building attributes and utility bills to generate a performance score for any building against its peers. These scores are the first step in prioritizing capital and operating improvements that help to save energy and money. Building energy benchmarking has been a big success in Philadelphia already. With performance scores for all of the buildings in its portfolio, the city's Energy Office has been able to implement a number of energy conservation projects. Commercial building owners and managers have also used benchmarking scores to identify investment opportunities and to market highly efficient properties. Extending the current benchmarking requirement is an important next step toward improving efficiency in Philadelphia. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Please, good morning, Joan Battery.
Good morning, Councilwoman and Councilman O. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Philadelphia Green Condo Co-op Initiative, and thank you for your continuing support for the environment and green building in the city of Philadelphia. Those of us who care about the city really appreciate your effort, and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
The Philadelphia Green Condo Co-op Initiative, GCCI, firmly believes that extending energy benchmarking and reporting to multifamily buildings by enacting this bill will be a win-win for the city, its current and its future residents. The GCCI was founded in 2009 by multifamily building owners in Philadelphia who wanted to make their buildings more sustainable. We provide educational programs about sustainability that is specific to the multifamily building community. Our steering committee is comprised of individuals and associations representing over 500, 150 of the largest condominiums and co-op buildings in the city. Those of us who live in large multifamily buildings occupy a very small footprint. We condense entire neighborhoods into one building. Therefore, one decision by a multifamily homeowner association to make their building energy efficient can have a huge impact on its owners and the city. For example, I live at the Philadelphia in the art museum area with approximately 1,100 other people. We live on one city block.
Wow.
In 2008, our voters, our owners, voted in favor of a $23 million capital project to make our building more energy efficient. We saved approximately $700,000 in utility costs the first year after the project completion, and have saved money ever since. We no longer pay $30,000 in fines for air pollution since we replaced our entire power plant. These savings enabled us to upgrade our building even more and flatten our monthly fee increases to approximately 3% over the past five years. The GCCI... The GCCI believes that enacting Bill 15001 would motivate other multifamily building owners to make their buildings more energy efficient if their buildings rank poorly as a result of this new reporting requirement. Making multifamily buildings more energy efficient should reduce operational costs that will make them more affordable and help retain residents, attract individuals who want to live in a sustainable building, significantly improve local and area air quality, and create jobs. Finally, we believe that enacting Bill 15001 would enable multifamily building owners to participate in helping make Philadelphia the greenest city in America. Thank you again.
Thank you for your testimony. That's huge, what you have done over there. So, you were able to successfully get 1,100 different thinking individuals, all thinking about the important value of that action.
Let's just say that it wasn't all 1,100. Do you really like to do that?
There are a few things that are 100%, right?
It was enough to pass that budget, and believe me, to a person, every single one of us is grateful that we pushed that through because we have experienced huge returns.
That's outstanding. It's a great example. Thank you. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairwoman and members of the committee. My name is Jim Giblin. I'm the President of the Greater Philadelphia Condominium Managers Association. I also happen to be the General Manager of the Kennedy House, just up the block. We are neighbors. And in an effort for full disclosure, I'm a retired fire captain from the city of Philadelphia. So, I guess you can say I've been in the saving business for quite a while.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you. I represent 30,000 owners who live in vertical communities in the city of Philadelphia that are managed by the members of the Greater Philadelphia Condominium Managers Association. My membership and those owners firmly supports the extension of this ordinance to cover residential properties, multifamily properties. You may ask, why would property managers who want to add more work and more reports to their already busy daily schedule? I think I can answer that, giving you similarities in managing residential properties with running a successful company or business. The answers are fairly simple. Successful companies learn quickly how to limit expenses to become profitable. In property management, we are always looking for ways to cut costs for services and supplies. One of the largest individual costs we deal with is for the energy needed to keep our residential buildings running efficiently. This legislation will give us the tool that will help us see how much we spend for energy and, more importantly, see how other residential buildings are doing. Nothing motivates more than competition. Number two, successful companies take care of their customers. In residential properties, our customers are our owners. They live in the buildings we manage, and they pay for the energy we use to light, heat, or cool the property and to run all the equipment used to make their lives pleasant and enjoyable. We are motivated to satisfy our owners because if we don't, we may not be there tomorrow. Successful companies know their product and improve it to make it more desirable to their customers and attract new customers. Property managers strive to improve the operations of the buildings we manage to make it more desirable for our current owners. It also helps to attract new owners who understand that lower operating costs are reflected in their monthly fees. A great man once said, "You can't control what you don't measure." A recent study done by the EPA indicated that, on average, buildings that are benchmarked use 2.4% less energy than those buildings that are not benchmarked, for current buildings, mostly commercial. The results for the two years of benchmarking show, they performed above the national average, they scored an average energy score of 58, and 1,900 buildings participated, representing 270 million square feet. Those buildings, all being commercial, are typically not occupied 24 hours a day. Our buildings are. So, the square footage is going to go up, and the energy costs are going to come down. In closing, I ask that you please help our property managers efficiently run the buildings that we serve, which will assure that our energy markets remain sustainable for our children, our grandchildren, and for many future generations of Philadelphians to come. Thank you.
So, that last statement should be in bold letters, underscored with three exclamation points. It's really not about us.
Absolutely.
It's about preserving the planet for others. As esoteric as that sounds, it really is important that we do this work. So, we thank you for the affirmation. Thank you for your testimony. We do have copies of your testimony, correct? Thank you again. Next panel up, Jamie Gauthier, Executive Director of the Sustainable Business Network, Paul Spiegel, President of Practical Energy Solutions, and Charlie Sgarotti, President and CEO of Independence LED Lighting LLC. Welcome to Philadelphia City Council. After this, we have one panel left. Katie Bartolata, Philadelphia Outreach Coordinator for Penn Future, and Logan Weld of Clean Air Council. And we have written testimony that has been submitted by Christine Knapp, the Director of Government Affairs for the Philadelphia Water Department, Charles Grant, who is Chief of Staff for the Philadelphia Gas Works. And I thought I saw Christine Young. You'll be testifying, correct? Or do you want to submit testimony?
Um, if time allows, I'd like to discuss this with you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, then, you're welcome. Good morning, and we'll start with Jamie, Executive Director of the Sustainable Business Network. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Jamie Gauthier, and I'm the Executive Director of the Sustainable Business Network of Greater Philadelphia, or SBN. SBN is a membership organization for locally owned businesses committed not only to profit but to making positive social and environmental impacts. Our mission is to build a just, green, and thriving economy in the Greater Philadelphia region. Our membership base is comprised of over 400 locally owned small businesses. These are independent retailers, manufacturers, renewable energy providers, green builders, and others. Together, these businesses account for 5,000 jobs in our region. I'm here on behalf of our members to offer support for Bill 150011, that would require energy benchmarking for any building with indoor floor space of 50,000 square feet or more. We support this bill for the potential positive impacts it would have on both our environment and our local economy. From a sustainability perspective, this bill makes much sense as buildings account for 60% of Philadelphia's overall greenhouse gas emissions. Energy benchmarking as a policy is infusing information and transparency into our local market, allowing building owners to compare the performance of their buildings to others and uncovering valuable information for tenants who ultimately bear the cost of energy use. Energy benchmarking is also unleashing positive market competition, enabling high-performing buildings to achieve greater occupancy rates and rents, and forcing owners of poor-performing buildings to do better so that they can stay in the game. But energy benchmarking is also impacting our local market in another way. As an outcome of benchmarking, building owners will seek to improve their ratings by using better materials and technologies and by consulting with experts on reducing energy use. This is opening a whole new market for our local sustainable businesses as it increases market demand for energy-efficient products and skilled workers, engineers, facility managers, energy auditors, sustainability consultants, software developers, architects, and construction workers. Such outcomes are already being seen in New York, which for the past several years has operated under legislation mandating all buildings of 50,000 square feet or larger to benchmark their energy use. In the report, Energy Benchmarking: The New American Frontier for Jobs, several businesses were cited to have dramatically increased their customer bases, as well as the amount of high-skill jobs that they are able to offer as a result of increased demand due to New York's energy benchmarking legislation. Today, you'll hear from two SBN members, Practical Energy Solutions and Independence LED, who are well-versed on energy benchmarking and its impacts on the environment, energy costs, and the economy. I want you to imagine, though, that as a city, we are rich with these types of businesses and the jobs that they are creating. These are jobs that can't be exported. These are jobs that will put money on the tables of families, and these are jobs that will truly help our city to be forward-thinking, world-class, and sustainable. And so, I think that what we're talking about here is not just about buildings. We're talking about improved environmental impact. We're talking about creating a whole new market for sustainable businesses, and we're talking about moving our city into the future. And so, I applaud you, Councilwoman, for your leadership on both this legislation and the prior legislation. I applaud the rest of council as well, and I ask that you go even further in the right direction by extending energy benchmarking to all buildings in our city of 50,000 square feet or more. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You were here for the first bill, were you not?
I was here for the first bill, and thank you for asking me back again. Happy to testify. My name's Paul Spiegel. I'm here in a couple of roles. I'm President of Practical Energy Solutions, and I'm also a board member with the Sustainable Business Network of Philadelphia. And in addition to that, I'm an adjunct faculty at Temple University here in Philadelphia in the Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering. So, thank you for, again, thank you for allowing me to testify today. I'd like to talk a little bit about this ordinance that requires both benchmarking of energy performance and disclosure of that energy performance, and both of those have a little bit different impact. So, the other day at dinner, I was telling my kids that after five years of dropping, the energy intensity use in our house had gone up a little bit to 57,000 BTUs per square foot, and they kind of stared at me with a blank look. You know, they're teenage boys, so they tend to stare at me with a blank look whenever I talk. But there was no context for that number. And what benchmarking does, it allows us to look at that number and compare it to other similar buildings, and they normalize the data so that it takes out some things like operating hours, and you really get to see where you stand with your peers. And so, it allows people to see, okay, I have this score. My energy performance is better than 90% of other similar buildings. I'm in great shape, and everything I've done so far is validated. That's great. You get a score where it shows that you're only better than 11% of your peers, now you see, I have hu... You know, maybe that's a negative thing, but it also means you have huge opportunities to improve your performance, and maybe at very low investment with high return on investment. So, the benchmarking part is critical, and adding multifamily residential, now that Portfolio Manager has a classification for multifamily residential, it's great that the city's looking to take advantage of that. The disclosure part is also important, and I've heard in the past, and you hear a lot just in general in the news these days, less government regulation is better, let's let free market forces work, and those tend to provide the best benefit for society. In this case and in many other cases, government intervention is important because markets only work effectively when people have complete information on which to make decisions.
Yes.
And so, providing this information on not just for the building owner to know how their building's doing, but potential tenants, potential purchasers of the property to make sure that they are aware of the energy performance, that's what allows a market to work well. The closer you get to complete information, the better decisions people can make. So, and within that context, these buildings, when we're using energy for our buildings, there are environmental impacts. We have CO2 emissions. With our mix of coal, oil, natural gas, nuclear to generate our electricity, we have emissions of sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, lead, mercury particulates that cause and aggravate asthma in children, that cause respiratory distress in senior citizens. And as an aspiring senior citizen, I'd like to see us reduce those environmental impacts. It's kind of a benefit to all of society when we take care of that, just like emission testing for automobiles. Very important for our health and the quality of our environment. So, it's like when you put a bill like that out in front of people that has a societal benefit, it's almost like asking, okay, are you in favor of making the world a better place or not in favor of that? It's a pretty easy answer. I don't... I was going to talk a little bit more about the job growth available. A lot of people have already talked about it, but having this disclosure will help break down this barrier that often happens in buildings where a tenant's paying the energy bill and the owner of the building owns the building but doesn't have a lot of motivation to invest in better energy performance because they don't get a return on that investment. The tenants who are paying the energy bills get that return. So, what you're hoping to get out of a bill like this is because they're publicly disclosing their energy performance, maybe an owner that isn't going to get a financial return directly by investing in better energy performance will make their property a more desirable place for people to locate, whether residential tenants or commercial tenants. So, that's really a key element of the disclosure part of this bill. And so, this is a really important addition with the number of multifamily facilities that we have over 50,000 square feet in Philadelphia. I think this has a huge impact, and I applaud you for presenting this bill, and I hope to see it go through and pass.
I thank you for underscoring, and even I tend to forget the environmental impacts, because what I've discovered is there's still a minority of us that care about this kind of issue. And I've struggled with where and what do we say to make the connect, that we grab our citizens or peers or families or those we hang out with? How do we grab their attention that these type of measures really do matter? And so, you've enlightened me on an argument, persuasive argument, that we can use on why something like energy benchmarking, which may be here, really does connect with us on a real human level because it boils down to our health.
Absolutely.
Or lack thereof. And what are we doing to make sure our environments are safe as a result of energy benchmarking?
It stuns me at times that having a clean environment has become a political and partisan issue because it just seems like everybody would be in favor of healthy air to breathe and clean water to drink, but apparently, it's an economic argument or political argument.
That's just why we have to do it, why we have to do it.
Yes.
So, I thank you for underscoring that perspective.
Thank you.
Good. Welcome back.
Good morning, Council.
Welcome back, Charlie.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, thank you for a multi-year commitment and the leadership on this incredibly important initiative. My name is Charlie Sgarotti. I'm the CEO of Independence LED, and since 2010, when we brought our manufacturing from China to southeastern Pennsylvania, we have seen an incredible increase in the appetite for energy intelligent illumination, which is core in the sister relationship to benchmarking because measurement is a key to management, which leads to understanding of why lighting can have an impact. From 28 Navy ships to the corporate headquarters of Morgan Stanley and many local businesses, we have demonstrated cost-effective energy reduction. I am here today in support of amending Section 9-34002 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Benchmarking Energy and Water Use to expand the buildings for which the benchmarking and reporting of energy and water usage data is required, all under certain terms and conditions. My support comes from two decades of experience in the energy sector, working with commercial and industrial building owners and managers. In every case, measurement has been the key to management. If people do not count and see the way that they use energy, they cannot manage it. Imagine driving a car without having measurement via a speedometer, odometer, or a gas gauge. We have basically been driving our buildings without dashboards, and benchmarking is a key step toward developing building intelligence. Lighting is a perfect example. Lighting typically accounts for 20 to 30% of commercial electricity, but it is not separately metered from other electricities such as air conditioning, computers, et cetera. For over 50 years, since fluorescent tube lighting has started dominating commercial illumination, it has gone largely unchecked because the cost is buried in the total electricity bills. Technologies such as light-emitting diode, LED tubes, have the ability to reduce the typical 32-watt four-foot fluorescent tubes down to 16 watts or less. This yields over 50% energy savings. Benchmarking will help provide valuable perspective on the ways that savings and the potential through those initiatives with illumination have basically cost-effective advantages on the bottom line for the businesses and on the environment. I've included today a handful of sample illustrations of the... I've included today a handful of sample illustrations of the actual savings that have been demonstrated through the combination of benchmarking and energy retrofits with LED lighting. The first is a sample exit stair for the Thomas Jefferson University Edison Building, North Tower. By reducing the fixture wattage from 60 watts to 32 with the LEDs and cutting the number of fixtures in half from 100 to 50, the total annual savings is 38,544 kilowatt-hours and over $3,000 a year over the long 60,000-hour life at this 24/7 runtime, seven years of illumination, the savings is $21,500 or more. That is a micro example of a stairwell that would have the same ripple effect impact in a multifamily high-rise. And so, I brought that example to demonstrate that it's not necessarily the whole buildings. What benchmarking can do is start to set a momentum in place to take the low-hanging fruit first, which is in many cases the long runtime areas for multifamily, like the vertical stair towers in the hallways. Another sample is a parking garage, many multifamily properties have parking garages. In this example, we were able to reduce 185-watt fixtures to just 37 watts. The total savings is over 169,839 kilowatt-hours for a center-city parking garage. That adds up to over $17,000 per year of savings and over the long life, over $133,000. Imagine the number of parking garages and the number of multifamily apartment buildings that have them that could start to take advantage of something as simple as the lights in the ceiling where the cars are parked. I included another example for an auto dealership, this is the McCaffrey Auto Group for their collision care. By reducing the fixture wattage and saving over 50%, the annual kilowatt-hour reduction was almost 200,000 kilowatts for almost 20,000 in savings, and in this case, over the 19.6 year life of the LEDs, the savings exceeds $390,000 of energy saved. Another large-scale example is with an Anheuser-Busch distribution center, it's the Gretz beer facility here in greater Philadelphia. And by reducing the wattage in the case of the fixtures from 450, which is a typical high bay, down to 174, there are over 725,000 kilowatt-hours reduced, over $101,000 of savings in each year, and over 700,000 over the life of the LEDs. Final example is with the Chocolate Works, which is a multifamily apartment building in old-city Philadelphia managed by the Reinhold Residential Property Group. We were able to find at the 24/7 areas, hallways, and again, exit stairs, ways to save over 84,000 in kilowatt-hour consumption each year. That's over $8,400, totaling almost $60,000 over the life of the LEDs. In this case, the lifetime carbon savings will be over 700,000 pounds. Small steps that make a big impact over multiple properties and over multiple years. I'm happy to field any questions and share with you other feedback that I may have received from owners, you know, through the course of our retrofits.
So, what type of skillset do you look for in members of your team, members of your company, to make these assessments?
Councilwoman, I appreciate the question because we see an incredible opportunity, having just hired a U.S. veteran, having looked at the work with young, old, middle-aged, white, black, women, men, the range is here to count things. So, what we see in the footprint of Philadelphia job creation is an incredible multicultural opportunity because we have boot camps and trainings, and we bring people in to identify what type of lights are in existing facilities. And it's a matchmaking exercise then to work with the executive and management team, including our engineers, to find which products that we don't always necessarily manufacture. There are sourcing opportunities for other manufacturers in the region as well as the U.S. to bring products to the needs of that particular facility. It could be the hallway sconce lights for an apartment building, it could be the lamp shade that someone reads with when they go to bed at night in the actual unit for multifamily, and it could be the parking garage fixture. So, this idea of soup to nuts, application of the right technology leads to the installation requirements. You start by counting, which is called lighting auditing, and end by installation, and all the jobs that unfold in between. We call it the ripple effect because even the driver of the truck that brings the lights to the building has a piece of the story. And that's where, when they talk about manufacturing and the multiplier for job creation, it has one of the highest opportunities to create ancillary jobs that are not necessarily our employees, but partner companies sourcing and providing all the tools that we need to deliver an excellent project.
So, you, do you, you train your personnel in Boyertown and Norristown?
So, Boyertown and Norristown are the production facilities and out of Wayne, Pennsylvania, and we're looking to open also facilities here inside of Philadelphia with some of the groups that are really rolling up their sleeves to look at everything from the multifamily and some of the commercial to the local, local churches and everything in between. And the idea is to bring almost a micro level of training at a mobile level to the people that want to look for those jobs. And I think together, there's an opportunity in Philadelphia
Sure.
To reach the target of the greenest city and also build some careers
For sure.
In the, in the course of doing it.
For sure, for sure. So, I'm clearly interested in that career path for, for young people. So, we'll talk about that more offline. Thank you all very, very much for your testimony. If we could please invite Katie Bartolata, and you'll correct me.
Correct me.
Bartolata. Philadelphia Outreach Coordinator for Penn Future, and Logan, Logan?
Welde.
Thank you, it's two Es in that, in that name.
Clean Air Council.
All right, Clean Air Council. If you could all state your name for the record and then proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Chairwoman Reynolds Brown and members of the committee. My name is Katie Bartolata, and I am the Philadelphia Outreach Coordinator for Penn Future, a statewide environmental advocacy organization. Penn Future is the convening organization of the Next Great City, a coalition of over 100-member organizations whose mission is to create cleaner, safer, and healthier Philadelphia neighborhoods. As a coalition, Next Great City identifies areas where neighborhood quality of life in Philadelphia can be improved through cost-effective, common sense policy solutions rooted in sustainability. With strong leadership from the Nutter Administration and members of City Council, the Next Great City Coalition has had overwhelming success in seeing our past policy recommendations come to fruition. In its 2011 policy agenda, the coalition recommended that Philadelphia City Council take action to protect and inform property buyers by requiring sellers to provide energy cost information. The city's benchmarking law in 2012 transformed this good plan into great action. Members of the Next Great City Coalition wholeheartedly supported its passage. I'm here to lend Penn Future and Next Great City support to the proposed expansion of the city's benchmarking law to include all commercial buildings of 50,000 or more square feet. By requiring additional large commercial buildings to disclose their energy use, the following positive effects of the initial benchmarking law will be compounded. Under the current law, buildings are encouraged to reduce their energy consumption based on standardized peer building comparisons, helping business owners make strategic decisions about investments and upgrades to yield maximum energy cost savings. A 2012 report commissioned by the California Public Utilities Commission found that benchmarking was highly correlated with building energy improvements and strongly encouraged participation in utility rebate and incentive programs. Additionally, energy benchmarking has a significant environmental benefit. A strategic building energy use reduction helps to reduce the city's carbon footprint. According to the Mayor's Office of Sustainability, building energy use accounts for more than 60% of Philadelphia's greenhouse gas emissions, making reductions in energy use a key component of mitigating climate change locally. Lastly, by including more buildings under the city's current benchmarking law, we continue to expand the market for energy efficiency services, a boon to the local job economy. A recent survey by the Institute for Market Transformation of markets with existing benchmarking laws found that the local businesses, found that local businesses were experiencing significant new demand for energy efficiency services and were able to expand their payrolls and hire new employees as a result. By expanding the city's benchmarking law to include all commercial buildings of 50,000 or more square feet, we stand to expand the law's proven externalities, cost savings, environmental benefits, and job growth. Both Penn Future and the Next Great City urge the passage of Bill Number 150011. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Please, say your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Yes, my name is Saleem Chapman. Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and the distinguished members of the Committee for the Environment. Thank you for hosting this hearing. My name is Saleem Chapman, and I am the Director of Policy and Strategy for the Clean Air Council. The Clean Air Council has been an environmental health advocate in the Philadelphia region since 1967 and is active on a number of environmental issues. The Clean Air Council is appreciative of this opportunity to speak in support of adopting Bill Number 150011, which extends the coverage of energy benchmarking to include residential buildings. Bill Number 150011 is a powerful catalyst for promoting energy efficiency in building environments. A recent analysis by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency found that buildings that are benchmarked save an average of 7% over a period of three years. Mandating disclosure of building energy use increases transparency and resolves the classic renter's dilemma. Typically, owners have little incentive to pay for improvements since tenants pay the energy costs of inefficient buildings. However, as occupants become more knowledgeable of a building's relative performance among similar structures, owners are persuaded to implement upgrades to remain competitive in real estate markets. Advancing building energy efficiency is a critical need. The single largest user of energy in the United States is the building sector, accounting for approximately 40% of total energy consumption. However, in cities that figure can be considerably higher, often 67, 70, and even 75%. However, a large fraction of the energy that flows through buildings is often wasted. This is particularly true of Philadelphia. For an average age of 1960, a disproportionate share of Philadelphia buildings were constructed prior to the implementation of modern building codes. Energy efficiency is important to ensure against rising energy costs. Between 2009 and 2014, the price of electricity in the United States increased 6.4%, while natural gas was as much as 13.8%, according to the Consumer Price Index. Energy costs in Philadelphia, however, exceed national averages. A Philadelphia family of four living in a property built in 1960 pays an average cost of $2,941 in energy costs. The national average is only 2,200. Last November, energy costs was 24% higher in Philadelphia compared to national averages, and during the same period, Philadelphia households paid 10.1% more than the national average for utility costs. This is significant given the socioeconomic demographics of Philadelphia residents. Energy cost is a significant contributor to economic hardship. Philadelphia has one of the highest rates of deep poverty, where nearly 100, 1,800, excuse me, 1,085,000 people, including about 60,000 children reside in households with income less than half the poverty rate. Living in least energy-efficient buildings, low-income households spend a higher percentage of their income on energy costs. And while energy expenditures for the average U.S. household accounts for only 5.5% of total income, low-income individuals spend between 15% to 20% of their monthly income on energy costs. So, I applaud this committee for taking this considerable step in the right direction. I urge you to consider pursuing a more comprehensive measure so that a broader constituency will benefit from the advantages provided by energy benchmarking. The square footage threshold upon which energy benchmarking becomes applicable should be reduced. Other jurisdictions have already pursued similar measures. For instance, in New York, requirements that buildings greater than only 10,000 square feet must report energy consumption for all units. It is recommended, is the recommendation of the Clean Air Council that the square footage threshold be systematically scaled down over a period of five years. I'm grateful for this opportunity to appear before this committee and look forward to answering your questions.
Good morning.
Good morning, Logan Welde also from the Clean Air Council. We thank you for this opportunity. The Clean Air Council does support this legislation, and we hope that it passes. So, one thing that, that my colleague, Mr. Chapman, pointed out was the Clean Air Council would like to see over the next five years, the reduction from 50,000 square feet down to 5,000 square feet. One of the things I, I don't think was discussed much today, but my colleague did discuss it in his testimony, low-income people are suffering from utility bills. They are deciding between putting food on the table or heating their homes in the wintertime or cooling them in the summertime when it's, when it's very hot. I have spoken with hundreds of people throughout Philadelphia at schools, in neighborhood community centers, and in senior citizen homes, and energy bills are a real problem in this city. You would be ignorant today if you went shopping for a car and you didn't look at the sticker on the window that showed you the miles per gallon of that car. It's the same thing as what we're doing with our buildings now. When you apply to rent a building now, you have no idea what the past tenants were paying in utility costs. You have no idea what the building owners, how responsible they are about fixing problems that, where the air leaks out of the ceiling, literally. I've been in homes where they don't qualify for PGW or PICO's low-income assistance programs because there's gaping holes in the ceilings.
Wow.
And they literally have to have their ovens on in the kitchens and have their kids sitting in there doing homework at night, and then they bundle them up at night to go to bed because they can't pay their utility bills any more than just having the oven on in the kitchen. Utility bills are a serious issue. 50,000 square feet, it sounds like a great number. I think one testimony today said that it was 700 buildings. We'd really like to see you, over the next five years, lower that to hit a much larger percentage of buildings in Philadelphia. 5,000 square feet, New York now has 10,000 square feet. We think the utilities are ready to do 50,000 square feet, and we think in the next five years, they'll be ready to do 5,000 square feet. There's no reason why I should be applying for a rental as a low-income resident in Philadelphia and not know what the energy bills were for the last five, 10 years of the building. Why should I pay 40% of my take-home income to utility bills when my neighbor next door, they have a good, a good landlord, their landlord fixed the leaky roof, and they're only paying 15% of their, of their take-home income?
Well, for sure, you present a very, very compelling argument, and it distresses me and makes me very sad when we don't factor in families in the way that you just described. It's real. And Councilman Jones often talks about how families have to choose between paying their rent and paying their utility bill. So, I'd like to invite the Office of Sustainability back to the table, and let's hear your response, reaction, or comment on this recommendation. How doable, how reasonable, does it make sense, is it the right thing to do, so that we're looking at the cross-spectrum of citizens across, across Philadelphia at all parts of the economic strata?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman, for giving us the opportunity to respond. We absolutely agree with the Clean Air Council that this is a critical issue for Philadelphia's families. We would like to see, obviously, additional resources dedicated towards any kind of efforts to improve the quality of housing in Philadelphia. The concern that our office would have with a lowering of the size threshold to 5,000 square feet is twofold. First, from the utility perspective, there is currently not an ability to transfer data in a way that will be sufficiently automated for building owners of that size, simply due to the complexity of the task. It, it's, you know, it's a free program that we're asking larger building owners to use, but there is some time involved, and we would not want to unduly burden smaller building owners with that requirement at this time. There are often some data privacy concerns involved with smaller buildings in, in cities that have pushed for similar requirements. There have been concerns among regulators.
There's been concern amongst the?
Amongst the regulators.
Okay.
That there, there will be some data privacy concerns at that threshold. The second concern our office would have would be just in terms of implementing that program with the current resources that our office has. I think I'd like to turn it over to our director to speak a little bit more on that.
Yeah, I think that this is something, this is an issue we've been talking about for a while now, and I'm Catherine Gajewski, Director of the Mayor's Office of Sustainability. And I think that there's an element here around the connection to benchmarking and disclosure, and how you get both renters and prospective residential buyers information about the previous energy use and energy costs of the particular unit or home they're looking to rent or to buy. And there's a number of potential legislative solutions that could get to that, that kind of fall outside and beyond benchmarking and disclosure laws, like the one we have on the books and the ones we're talking about today. So, I think it's a separate conversation and one that we're happy to have. And then the other issue there is one that's more tied to funding and programming. So, we have programs that are run by the Office of Housing and Community Development that implement federal dollars to help low-income residents to make energy upgrades to their buildings. So, basic system repairs, the LIHE program, I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to think about how we can improve those programs, and funding constraints are certainly a reality, but... But I think there's a real opportunity to look at how we program some of those dollars and could do more with them and potentially look for other dollars to pool so that we can go deeper into those homes that we have the opportunity to do work in. So I think there's a programmatic element and then a separate legislative element that we'd be happy to talk about at a later date.
Well, I will go on record then to say that that needs to be our next level of interest and our next level of focus because we're a smart government. We got professionals who figure it out, and if New York can figure it out and better serve citizens who are probably most in need, then we, as a government, over five years, because I heard the caveat, let's figure out how we can do this strategically, intentionally over the next five years, recognizing fully that it takes resources, and it takes resources, and it takes resources. But what we know is, as President, Vice President Biden said it best, you don't have to tell me your priorities, show me your budget, and I'll tell you your priorities. So my ask is that we take this on collectively as a next opportunity so that we can indeed capture those thousands of citizens that don't have a voice when it comes to progressive future initiatives like this.
And I just want to respond one more time that lowering the threshold kind of feels right, but it's not necessarily the most strategic move and the best use of resources to get to what I think the goal Clean Air Council was articulating is. So I just want to go on record saying that there's kind of a natural, I think, inclination to think about lowering the threshold to capture more, but it's not necessarily the way that you drive to those end goals. So again, have to have that conversation.
So then we'll figure out collectively over conversations
Absolutely.
and discussions and strategic dialogue over the next two, three, four years, God willing, how we get to what they just articulated.
Yep, we'd be happy to.
Okay? All right, then. You good? Okay, then, thank you very much. So our last witness, if you could please come forward, and then we're going to move to take an amendment on this bill, Christine Young-Gertz, Esquire Government Affairs Director for the Pennsylvania Apartment Association. Please. It's our last witness, and then we're going to move to take action on this measure.
Thank you so much. I submitted written testimony and sitting in the room today, listening to everyone else, I really thank you for two minutes to add to what my
Please.
testimony. And that is, you just said what I wanted to say, and you summed it up beautifully. In terms of going forward with benchmarking mandates, I think you said strategic dialogue, and that was just the last thing I wanted to ask for going forward. And thank you personally and publicly for, in any issue you tackle, you never pass the bill and throw away the key on the issue. Your door has always been open to me in bringing up all the devil in the details that come with the experience of compliance with any new mandate. All I want to say, multifamily is, rental is, it's just, it's not a one-size-fits-all proposition. And going forward, well, let me just back up for two seconds. My members are responsible property managers. They're ahead of the curve, really.
Okay.
with energy efficiency. It's in their best interest to be. They know their bottom line depends on delivering a good product. And delivering a good product means that they can boast about the most professional, state-of-the-art management standards that they adhere to. So, but again, devil in the detail. So going forward, can we please be a part of the dialogue?
Of course.
There's going to be any number of compliance issues. Our members are very concerned about the privacy of their residents and hopefully the utility companies who have assured that they can provide the aggregate information on buildings, which is really the crux when it comes to benchmarking. That's the pivotal thing. The aggregate information on the property is the most important thing, or else the exercise is pointless.
Agreed.
My request is to be at the table and to thank you for having the table
You're welcome.
above and beyond this hearing.
You are absolutely welcome. And so we have an assignment after we take action on this bill, do we not, all of those who testified? Hello? Yes, we have an assignment to tackle in a very thoughtful way the challenge you've put forth because all of us on this side of the table care about the entire citizenry of our city. And I mentioned to the leadership at the Mayor's Office of Sustainability that too often I walk into rooms where we're discussing energy and the future and the environment sustainability, and I'm the only one in there who looks like me. That's a problem. We need to make sure that we reach deep and we reach wide to capture those who typically don't get to the table because their lives are focused on trying to put food on the table. Okay, then, thank you very, very much. So with that, we will now go into the public meeting. The chair recognizes Councilmember O for a motion to amend Bill Number 150011.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that Bill 150011 be amended. The amendment has been circulated to all members of the committee.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First, call for a second.
Second.
Thank you very, very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Very well. I move that Bill Number 150011 as amended. Be reported out of this committee with a favorable recommendation and that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading at our next scheduled session of City Council.
Second. Well, I could do that if you want me to, yes.
All right.
I move that Bill 15001, as amended, be reported out of the committee with a favorable recommendation and that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading at the next session of council. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, this bill has been approved out of this committee with a favorable recommendation. We want to thank all of yous who showed up, who care about this issue, who care about the future. Thank you for your expertise and your testimony. This concludes this meeting on the environment and sustainability. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you, Councilwoman, very much. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much.